So the first thing I want to do, first of all, is welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening. I think it's so important and I'm glad that we're able to provide this sort of insight to the school board. And tonight we'll be talking about facts about the school district and kind of just showing you how large our district really is and giving you a little background. We're also going to talk about roles and responsibilities of the board and the superintendent. We're going to talk about Open Meetings Act. That is so important, especially now. I mean, it's important regardless, but legislation, there's a bill out there now that is saying that if you violate the Open Meetings Act, it could be a $10,000 fine to you personally. And then we're going to talk about governments, governance and policy and how that works within the school district. So if we go the next slide, Katie. So never doubt that a small group thoughtful committee citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. And that's what I have to say to you as individuals wanting for school board. You have such an opportunity to facilitate change and advocate for students. But the first thing I'd like to do is introductions and I'm looking at my screen here. Let me go to full screen. And I'm not sure, how about if I just go down the list here? I see Alicia Hildy's on the call with us. Alicia, would you like to introduce yourself? Alicia is one of our board members.
Hi, I'm Alicia Hildy and I serve on the Acre School Board and I'm here as a participant.
Thank you. And Judy Eldridge.
It's, thank you, it's Judy Elidge.
Oh, Elidge, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Everybody says Eldridge. It's, I spell it all the time for people, but anyway, I am running for school board seat B. I believe that's the seat you're in, Star. You're leaving.
Yes, it is. Thank you. And then we have Bobby.
Yes, hello.
Would you like to introduce yourself, Bobby?
Yes, I'm just here to just be better informed.
Okay, well, great. Well, we're glad to have you. Thank you. I see Carl Jacobs. Carl Jacobs, would you like to introduce yourself?
Good evening, everyone. Carl Jacobs, candidate for seat G. I apologize for not being on video. I am in the midst of making dinner for four hungry or hangry teenagers, depending on your perspective. Glad to be here. Thank you for the training.
You're welcome. Sammy, would you like to introduce yourself? Sammy Graham.
Hi, this is Sammy and I can't see myself, so I'm not sure what's going on with my screen, but because I have it all. It says that it's, the video's on and anyway, I'm happy to be here and I'm a candidate for seat E, Echo.
Okay, thank you, Sammy. And then I have Kim Paulson.
Hello, I'm Kim Paulson. I am a candidate for seat F and I am on my way home right now.
Okay, well, great. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. All right. Looks like we have one more joining us. Marilyn Stewart, are you there? Would you like to introduce yourself? Marilyn, can you hear me? Marilyn?
Star, it looks like she might not have joined with audio. It might still be trying to connect.
Oh, okay, great. Well, we'll catch her here in a few minutes. And for those of you, we are recording this, so we will have it posted on our website so others can attend. We also have and Marilyn, are you with us now? Would you like to introduce yourself? Okay, are you there, Marilyn? All right, well, let's go ahead. Alyssa Vaquilla, she is actually president of the school board and she's here to join us. And now that I said who you were, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, hi, Alyssa Vaquilla's current board president, but I'm also a candidate for seat G as well.
Thank you.
Here to enjoy the night. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dora Wilson, would you like to introduce yourself?
You bet. My name is Dora Wilson and I am a candidate for seat F for this upcoming election.
Great, thank you for joining. And I'm going to try one more time. Marilyn, are you there? All right, well, Marilyn's here. Hopefully she can hear us and maybe chime in a little bit later. So we've done our introductions and, you know, one of the things I wanted to say to you as individuals wanting for school board is this. If you're elected, you and your fellow board members, actions will have far reaching results. The policies you set up will shape the education of tomorrow's leaders. The guidelines you create will direct the superintendent in navigating the problems your school district faces daily. And your decisions will affect the families of hundreds of students and employees now and in the future. School board authority rests with the board as a whole. Not each member individually, school board decisions can only be made by majority of the members of a public meeting. And from the moment school board members begin service, they are accountable to the public, the community, to our students, to state government, and even to the courts. So just with that introduction, what I'd like to start at first is our fun facts. Katie, you want to move us over to our fun facts? All right, so fun facts. And we're going to do a bunch of these, but fun fact, so right now we are one of still, one of the 100 largest school districts in the nation. We have 97 schools and other facilities. We have more than 130 programs in schools, have 100 plus languages spoken by ASD families. And we employ more than 6,000 employers, employees. We are one of the largest employees in the state of Alaska. And when we talk about the 42,000 students now, of course, most of you know that with the pandemic, a lot of our students have gone to homeschooling or charter schools or wherever. But we do, as you come aboard as board members, you will see that number increase because our students will be coming back to ASD. And that will increase this number here as you see it now. We have lost some students due to leaving the state. That happens every year. But for the most part, we're going to see an increase. Our prediction is probably back up to about 45,000 or more. But when we talk about the 130 programs within the school district, we have we have when it comes to language immersion, we just about lead the nation in the amount of languages that we have in our schools. We have seven immersion programs. We have Russian, Chinese, Spanish. Help me out here, Alicia. I see you shaking your head.
Japanese, German.
German.
Was that five? What are we at?
That's Chinese. Did I say Chinese? Yupik. Yupik is one of, we're one of the first schools to have a native language in our elementary school. And Russian, did we say Russian? I can't remember. Anyway, we've got a slew of them. And so when we talk about choices in our school district, I mean, we have a lot of choices within our school district. And I think, do we have that slide? There we go, right there. So educational opportunities in ASD, I mean, look at this. There is something for everyone. There's trade. There's biomedical, there's engineering, there's construction. We have schools within schools. I mean, there are so many choices here for our students and families that our challenge is making sure that all of our families know what is available to them. And so that has been a goal of our school board is to make sure that we get that notification out and make sure that all families are aware of the opportunities for students in the school district. Some of the other things we have are transportation, you might not know this, but transportation, we own and operate 117 buses inside the municipality of Anchorage. We approximately transport 24,000 students daily. We run more than 225 daily routes in partnership with Radiant. They are another company that works with us in busing our students. We complete more than 5,000 activity trips each year. Deliver more than 2,000 Chromebook computers this last year. Operated 13 food service routes delivering about 3,200 meals daily. Assisted distributing thousands of meals at 28 schools. So even though our students weren't back in school, our buses were busy and they were delivering the services that our students needed as far as Chromebooks, work that they needed to deliver to their homes, meals, all of the above. So I think that was very important when we talked about busing. Busing is also funded through the state and it goes by the number of students that we have. So we have lost a little bit in our transportation budget, which we'll be looking to make up in our budget when we talk about that tomorrow. Facilities, our buildings are owned. There's been some confusion about this, but our buildings are owned by the municipality. Taxpayers pay for these buildings. And so if we were to close a school or just continue service to that school, the first thing we'd have to do is offer it to maybe one of our charter schools to see if they'd like to use the facility or rent it. The other thing we would have to do is then offer that building back to the municipality. So when we look at zoning or boundaries and we look at our schools and where the students are associated or located at. Sammy, did you have a question?
No, I'm trying to fix my screen. Sorry.
Oh, okay, that's fine. So when you look at that and when we take in consideration and one of the policies we just passed for the school board is taking a look at school boundaries every 10 years and starting with 2022. Because we do know with this pandemic, it has changed a lot of things. And so we need to take a look at that. We know we have a lot of new housing being built in the areas. If you look at Sand Lake and up at Bear Valley and other places within town that could affect our student population. So that is one of the things we have, hopefully, the superintendent will be able to do in 2022. You know, I never say never, so let's just hope that we get things back to normal and we'll be able to accomplish these things we want to accomplish. So speaking of that, it's, when we look at schools, it's not a matter of, we have taken schools, we've combined school programs to minimize expenses for the district and things that we've done there. We've closed two schools, which is not always something we like to do. But it's necessary when we start looking at these things. And of course, I just want to emphasize anytime we do anything like this, we will be looking for community input from parents and students and the community that we don't make those decisions just the school board. Oh, something to add.
Yeah, do you want to touch on the hold harmless provision for closing schools? That it's phased out over five years?
Right. I tell you what, since you brought it up, one of you.
Yeah, so just sometimes people say, oh, if we close all these schools, we'll save all this money. And we do have provision in state law that was secured a few years ago that phases it out, but ultimately they're in our funding formula, having more small schools improves your budget. So closing schools can actually harm your budget. There is a, there is a phase out window, thankfully, that's been added, but eventually it's a detrimental effect. So you just have to be mindful when talking about consolidation.
Right. And then one other thing I wanted to talk a little bit was all our facilities. We said we have 97 schools and other facilities. But we have over 7.7 million square feet in our facilities. We're one of the largest property managers in the state. So just a few more facts about our facilities. When we talk about funding and we're going to talk a little bit more about budget, but when we talk about funding, I want to talk about where does our funding come from? Well, it comes from state, comes from federal, and it comes from local taxes. Federal is about 3% of our budget, state is about 58%, and local taxes are about 37%. We do have some other revenue which adds up to about 2%. So as you look at this slide, you can see how this state foundation formula is put together. And it starts out with a number of students and then we have a we have a district cost factor which we add in to the ADM. And then we look at our special needs factor. So for any bilingual education, special education, gifted and talented, vocational education, we adjust the ADM and we multiply it by 1.2, which provides about a 20% annual revenue. Then we also look at our CTE factor. So career technical education. This is adjusted by multiplying by 1.015 and actually provides another 1.5%. And you can look as the numbers are increasing across the bottom. The next one is intensive needs count is multiplied by 13 to determine the final adjusted ADM. And then the district's correspondence count is added in and multiplied by 0.9. So if you look at the bottom here, you've got a total of 75,000, 066. And if you multiply that by the base student allocation, which is $5,930 per student, that's where we come up with our basic need or our BSA and adjusted our ADM of $45,140,075. And then you look at taxes, I don't have to read this, you guys can see it, but if we look at the meal rate, we look at property values and we look at the taxes. We do have a cap on our taxes, so we can only collect so much and it actually is based on how much we get from the state. So there is a limit as to what we can collect. And then federal aid is usually our Title I, our Title VII. I'm trying to think. All those other, can you think of some other ones, Alicia? Title I, Title VII, Title II. Thank you, Sammy. But those are federal dollars that we get that help with our school districts in areas where it's Title I, low socioeconomic or students needing extra help that we can provide more resources for. So any questions so far? We've gone over quite a bit here. Okay. Well, the next thing that I wanted to just give a couple of facts are is nutrition. And we didn't have this up here. But I always think it's interesting to kind of get a gauge of how large our district is. And so in a normal school session, we actually use 28,000 bananas a week. That's a lot of bananas. We use 8,000 pounds of fresh potatoes to make one run of mashed potatoes. We serve breakfast, daily breakfast of 10,316 meals. And for lunch, we serve an average daily lunch of 18,524. So it just gives you an idea of the magnitude of serving our students and what it takes. And not last but least, we have our information technology. And it's, they have been absolutely wonderful. And part of our funding has gone to this group because with distributing the 2,642 Chromebooks to students in all grade levels since March 2020 to support our online and remote learning, we've had to have technical support for all of those. So that when students and families call in, we have somebody that is answering those calls. So we've had to increase our technology department to be able to service these Chromebooks and to be able to answer the questions and actually just to get them ready so that we could distribute them. We've also, 2,778 cable modems and 246 hotspots have been provided to families to assist with internet connectivity. This is to provide equity for our students that may not have had that ability prior to our help. So we wanted to make this as equitable as possible and providing as much of the service needed that our students needed. And IT continues to work towards one-on-one initiative to provide each and every ASD student a device. This ratio will be achieved for all high school students to begin fourth quarter. So, you know, delivery of education, I always say with with crisis comes opportunity. And so I think this has provided an opportunity to us to maybe look at a different way of presenting education to our students, but of course, always presenting it to them in the manner that makes sense to them and how they will best learn. ASD provides support for more than 50,000 devices in schools and departments. And it also manages 5,877 routers, switches and wireless access points. So ASD manages 39,260 computers and other clients on the network during the school year, 12,746 wired and 26,514 wireless. So if you think about that, that's a laptop for every teacher, principal, maybe an aide. And now we're adding that to our students. So when we look at this, one of the things we've been talking to our legislators about is bandwidth. Because, you know, you always hear about in the rural areas, but as we're providing all this connectivity to our students, we're going to be looking at some of the same issues in our schools with bandwidth. So that is something that a school board members and the district, we are certainly advocating for with our legislators.
Hey, I have a question, Star.
Sure.
Yes, could that possibly be purchased with some of the COVID money coming to the district? I understand there's close to $65,000 coming. Could something like bandwidth of that be purchased or put towards something like that?
Um, it certainly could, Judy. I want to tell you in our budget for 2022, because we were 28 million deficit in our budget. We are using those funds to pay teachers to keep them so that we can keep our classrooms small. So 235 teachers are being paid through our COVID funds or SRT2 funds from the state to be able to keep them in the district and hopefully keep our classrooms small.
Oh, I didn't know COVID money could be used for that. Okay.
Yes. There have been restrictions on COVID and this actually isn't, this is SRT2 funds. It's federal money that's given to the state that's passed on to us.
And it's one-time money.
And it's one-time money. That's exactly it. So we're paying for these teachers now. There's a possibility, as everyone's been reading, that we might have one more one-time funding from the government, from the federal government. We'll have to wait and see and what the restrictions are and how soon we have to use it. But at some point, there will be no more one-time money and we'll have to operate a district on the budget that we have, which in this case could be, I mean, if you're already looking what we're funding through these funds to keep our classrooms small and to provide the service we need to our students, it's going to be quite challenging. So. And that's not my opinion, that strictly from looking at the budget. So, all right, Katie. All right, so school boards, what are we responsible for? Well, we're responsible for four items of governance. We hire and evaluate the superintendent. We also have the board secretary. It's our only two employees. We set and approve the district budget. We adopt and review curriculum. And we develop and adopt policies to govern. So if you want to go to the next slide, Katie. So let's talk a little bit about our roles. So with board roles, and I could have put this out more specifically, but I thought we talked about it in general. And so for board roles, we are actually looking at the board looks at core values and beliefs. And if you go to our website, it talks about our core values and beliefs. And it's the potential that every student deserves the opportunity to achieve his or her potential. High expectations is another one of our values and beliefs. Accountability, the district will be open and transparent. Safety, all school and departments will be safe and supportive and responsiveness. And that's public education should be responsive to it, ever-changing world. So based on those core values and beliefs, and these are not things that the board just comes up with. These are things that we hear, especially when we go out and start looking to, as we did this last year, put our strategic plan together. Sammy, you have a question?
I do. Could you just, before you, before you say that, number four on the slide before, what was number four on the slide before, after adopt and approve curriculum? Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. And adopt policies to govern.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's fine. So, you know, when we developed our strategic plan, one of the things that we wanted to do is to make sure that we had community input on what the values are of the community and make sure that our values and beliefs mirror those of the community. And so what we did is we first put together a group of individuals, we called it a strategic planning, and how we would go out to the community, who would we reach out to? And these members of this committee were from faith, from medical, from health organizations, from the mayor's office. We had United Way. We had religious individuals there from some of our leading churches. I mean, we really tried to be encompassing of all of those that we felt could reach out to their members and we could get the information we were looking for. And then the other thing we did as we went out to our four schools and in different sections like, you know, east, south, Eagle River, and then I think Diamond was the other one. And what we did, something a little different, because, you know, we've always said, and I felt this way too, is that we don't always listen. We do a lot of talking and we have panels that you ask questions of and you just get a question to your answer, but you really don't get no, you don't get any feedback. So in this case, we developed small groups of maybe five individuals. There were students, there were teachers, there were community members. I mean, it was absolutely fantastic. And then we didn't tell them what we wanted to say. We just had some topics. And then we said, what's important to you? What's important to you as far as what a graduate looks like? What's important to you in educating our children? What as a community would you like to see in a graduate as far as working for your business? Or, you know, whether that's they go to college or, or a tech school or trade school or whether they just entered the job market. So we received so much just wonderful feedback. And based on that, I truly believe that's what our core values and beliefs are. And of course, that's what we set our goals to. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. And then from that, we develop our mission and vision statement, which I'm not going to read. It's on the district's website. So you're welcome to go out and look at that. And we talked a little bit about our goals and how that strategic planning, we do it every five years. And so for us as a board, this was the first time that we were able to do this and incorporate some of the beliefs that we heard from our community because we've been following the old strategic plan, the old goals. And not that they were bad ones, they certainly weren't, but there were a lot of them. So we decided to focus on three. What are the three most important things to our community? And of course, it was reading, math and career, career, technical and life ready. I mean, we heard that from our students over and over again. So we felt really good about that because now the superintendent and her staff could focus on three distinct goals that the community had told us was important to them. And then we provided guardrails to help her come up with her procedures, their guidelines, how they're going to implement these goals that the board has set for them. Sammy, you have a question? You're on mute.
I'm chatting away. Were parents involved in this? You said there were lots of community members, but, and then how were they selected? Did, to be on the committee?
And the committee was, there were a few parents on there, but basically it was community members that could help us get the message out to their organization and their groups. So we wanted to bring people in that could help us share getting this out. I mean, we went to I mean, we went to groups where there was four people and did the same thing, because we wanted to hear everybody. We went to churches. If they wanted to invite us, we went there. They didn't want to invite us, we asked if we could come. So, you know, as far as parents, students, they were all part of that community effort that we did during our, when we were at the different school sites. And and we also had a survey out there for everyone to fill out. We also did a town hall on Zoom, which was absolutely wonderful. We had, I forget, close to 100 participants. I mean, it's not great for, for the population that we have, but 100 was really a lot. So we got a lot of feedback when we drafted our goals and getting feedback on whether they agreed with them, thought there should be some tweaks to them, you know, those type of things. So we were able to do that twice. So we really, the feedback that we got from the public, the parents, the students, the teachers was that this was probably the best job the district had done at gathering information before putting our goals together. Not to say that you can't do better than what we did, but we felt pretty good with the outreach that we did. Can I answer your question, Sammy? Okay. So now we have goals. We're waiting. Dr. Bishop and her group will be bringing back to us the objectives and how the district is going to work to put these goals and guardrails into practice in the district. And one of the things with this is, I don't know if you've noticed in our school board meetings, but we now have what we call student output. And so what we're asking for, you're smiling, Alicia.
Outcomes.
Sorry, outcomes, yes, student outcomes. And so what we're doing is we're holding the district accountable for the goals that we've set by measuring them and reporting to the board every board meeting of how we're meeting those. What does it look like? What are our children learning? What is the data? So every school board meeting, we get a report on student outcomes. Whether that be graduation, as we get students back in school, that'll certainly change. We'll have, be able to assess our students and find out where they are. It's important right now to find out where they are and what we need to do to bridge that gap with all of our students. So that's been a change also. But now, the board also does policies, and we'll talk about policies a little bit later in this presentation. So for the superintendent, what does the superintendent do? Well, first of all, as a board, you know, I hear a lot of conversation about, you know, oh, you always agree with the superintendent. You know, you're just working for the superintendent. She's not working for you. Well, I will say that we challenge the superintendent as she challenges us. And to have a good working district, you have to be able to work with everyone. And all of our goals are to be the best interest of our students. What's best for our students? And sometimes that's not always what's best for the adults. So, yes, we have disagreements. Yes, we may agree on a lot of things. But the important thing is that you have to work together. So you've got to find that working relationship. And that doesn't mean that you always have to disagree with the superintendent, or the superintendent doesn't always have to disagree with the board. We have to try to work together to provide what's best for our students. So I just wanted to throw that in, and that's not my opinion, well, it is my opinion, but it's also the opinion if you talk, look at any Alaska Association of School Boards or any other school boards, that's the feedback that you'll get from that. So superintendent, even when we do policies, the school board sets the policies, but it's the district that sets the objectives or the action plan or the procedures. And so, once they put those into play, the school board governs, so we set the policy in motion. And it's the superintendent leadership and staff that actually follow through on putting action plans and being able to support the policies that the goal has set for the district. Any questions on roles for the board or superintendent? You guys are awful quiet, so.
I have, I have a question. I don't know if it's in this area. But I just learned the other day, and I was a little bit surprised that, and I wondered who made this decision that parents are no longer allowed on curriculum committees. And being a former curriculum director, that is something I would have never considered, most certainly if I want to be sure I share values of the, of the parents and the kids we teach. And is that so, or was that just a rumor that I heard?
Judy, that's a rumor. When we put together curriculum committees to look at curriculum, if we're looking at new curriculum, we have so many parents, we have teachers, we have principals, school board members can be on that committee. So we try to encompass everyone in making, putting that recommendation forward to the school board. So.
I'm glad I asked, because I heard that and I thought, man, that is hard for me to believe, so I'm glad I asked it.
Yeah, no, we, we want to get the input from everyone. So I appreciate that question. Thank you. All right. Do you have anything to add, Alicia? On, Alicia actually chairs our governance committee and has been a wonderful chair in keeping us grounded and doing what we need to do. And we'll talk a little bit more, if you go to the next slide, Katie. Well, let's, let's hold off, Alicia, and then I'll ask you for your input, unless you've got something to add now. So when we look at board superintendent roles, we have these funnels. So the end result is what? So as a school board, what do we do? Our action is to vote, right? So we look at who, what, and how much, because what are we responsible for? We're responsible for the money, so we want to know how much. We want to know who it's for and what it is that we're voting on. Now, if you look at the superintendent, it's more means, how? So by whom? Who's going to be responsible for it? When is it going to happen? Where is it going to happen? And how is it going to happen? So these are actions. These are the recommended implement of what the board has voted on. Now, Katie, if we can go to the next slide. All right, so an effective board has a strong connection with its policy manual, governed by written board policy, and continually engaged in each of the five ongoing policymaking roles. And before we start, we're just gonna, I'm gonna have Katie go over to her ASD policy manual and show you where you can find that on our district website, if anybody wants to look at that. So if you'll just follow her. And she's going to our website. It says school board, and then it says policy, board policy. And so this brings up our board policy. You can just click on one of those, and you can see just in this, students, look at all these policies. You can scroll down, Katie. Yeah, so there, that's just one section. And so I would say, as a school board member, you want to try to become as familiar with these policies as possible, although there is a lot out there. Alicia, you want to talk a little bit about the governance committee and what it does?
Oh, you know, I'm gonna, I love the policy. Well, while Katie's here, Katie, will you go? You're in the 9,000 series. So even if you're running against me and you want help figuring this part out, I will just help you. This is important. The board bylaws, the 9,000 series, that's the, that's the school board's role. That's what you are going to be accountable for the doing, right? So, you know, when Margot Bellamy came on, the first thing I said to her was, read the 9,000. Every single one of those 9,000s, you need to know. That's how you know how to get things on agenda items, how to do the work of the board. I mean, there's things that you're accountable for as well, that can get you in trouble if you're not paying attention. So the 9,000 series, and you can get that off of our school board website, or just, you know, Katie will always, you can just call me too. But we do an annual cycle, so one of our board policies requires that we review this on a four-year cycle, because as a board policy, the board does have to make sure its policy is being followed. So we have a four-year cycle, so this year we're in the sixth, we're just finishing up the 6,000s. Then next year will be the 7,000s and 9,000s. You'll go through and see if there's any problems, or that way you make sure you're cycling through every part of it. At least once every four years. And certainly at any time, a board member can bring up a concern about a policy, but you certainly want to make sure we're touching on every one of them and not just ignoring some. I'll stop there.
Right now, we are, oh, sure, go ahead, Sammy.
Is there a policy on residing in Anchorage? Is there? So that's a charter, that's a, that's the Muni Charter. So that's another fun spot to check out. If you go to the Muni Charter, there's a section on school boards, and it says you have to be an Anchorage resident there.
And Sammy, I'm still an Anchorage resident.
I've seen that, that it says that. I mean, I've read the charter. My dad was on the charter commission. What, what about the big absences? How, how does the board address that amongst themselves?
Actually, that is something that we have brought up recently. If you look, it's supposed to be 75% in-person over 24 months. And if you look at most of the board members, like myself and Hildy and Lisa, we're at 98%. We did vote during the pandemic that you could access a board meeting through Zoom or remotely, and that you could also vote. But the guideline is you do have to ask the president to be absent of that meeting, and she does have to approve it. And if you don't ask for that permission, you can be considered party or not, or absent without an excuse. And you do have to attend 75% of board meetings in person. And.
Years that didn't happen, that's what I'm asking, so.
I'm sorry, say.
Before you, there were years that didn't happen, so that's what I was wondering.
Right. And if you know, with Betty Davis, that was a very difficult one because of her illness, and you know, that was one of the things we were looking at, but Betty Davis decided to resign because of her health. So it was, it was very challenging. So. And is it, Niall, I'm not sure I'm saying your first name right, so I apologize.
Can you hear me?
Yes. What's your question?
It's Niall Williams, yes.
Niall Williams, yes.
So I was just going to speak about that attendance policy. And so it does appear that the language of the policy is very clear, that it says physical attendance, 75% of the regular board meetings is required. And that's over a 24-month period, as I'm reading it.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I see according to the website right now that lists the attendance records. There's a number of interesting things. Number one, four of the seven members appear to be in violation of that over the 24-month rolling period. And also, the meeting on December 7th of 2020, the joint assembly and school board meeting appears to be missing from the attendance records. I was wondering if someone could clarify that.
Actually, Niall, I'm going to let Ms. Michaela speak. She's got her hand up, and she might want to add something to what you're talking about.
I do, so thank you. This has been a topic of conversation. And the policy actually really goes back to about five years ago. We had a board member that was very absent for a year. And the reason that the board had voted back then to put this policy into place the way that it was is because we want our representatives for our community to be here, not gone and always calling in. And so that's kind of where this came from, and it's been several years. This year, obviously with COVID, and I've had this reviewed with an attorney already, and we're going to take a look at the language in this policy. One of the big things is when we have mandates or, what's the word I'm looking for, a significant encouragement by city officials and state officials during this pandemic to stay home. Or at one point, the boardroom was actually closed, so we had to do that. And we had to follow it, and we had to encourage it, you know, to the best of our ability. When we opened up the boardroom recently, then there became choice in the matter. And that's why we've chosen to post the two attendance descriptors, the physical in-person, as well as their overall participation. If you take a look at it, our board members, they are participating, and they are here local. And so I'm not really having an issue with it. So we're working through it as a board, because this is a time during COVID where it just was not, this policy was not written for a COVID pandemic for board members. As for the December meeting that you are referencing, our attendance is specific to our regular meetings only. It does not include any of our joint meetings or our work sessions or any of those kinds of things. So hoping that that can clarify it a little bit. And then want to turn it back over to start it. Keep going on the presentation. Thank you.
Sammy, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I didn't mean to open a can of worms. I just was wondering if the one there that, that I was missing, so thank you.
No, you certainly didn't, and it's been a topic of conversation between the board and the public. So it's good to have that clarified. Thank you, President Michaelis. And I see Marilyn. Hello.
Well, hello, how are you guys?
Good. So thank you for joining us. Do you want to introduce yourself quickly?
Well, I'm Marilyn Stewart, and I'm a candidate for the Anchorage School Board, running for seat B. So I want to applaud the entire school board for hosting this. I think it's awesome. And I, I was connected with you guys from the beginning, but I was by my phone, so I just made it home. So now I can visually see you. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for joining us. So we've looked at the policy manual, so now everyone knows where to go to look at the board policies, right? All right. If we can go to the next slide, Katie. So we talked a little bit about, you know, one of the things I wanted to tell you is that we actually subscribe to a service from the Alaska Association of School Boards, which updates our school board policy annually. And not that it tweaks anything that we do or any policies that we set. What it does is it provides any, if there are any updates to the law or to legislation or anything like that, that needs to be updated within our policy manual to keep us in compliance, that is done annually, or when those things happen, like maybe a bill gets passed or something like that, then they send us that update so that we don't have to maintain that. So that is something that is a nice service that is provided by the Alaska Association of School Boards. But what we do as a school board, you know, what I tell school board members is when you want to advocate, your power is in policy. Whatever you want to do, or whatever change you want to affect, it's in policy. And that's where you have to look if you want to change things, if you want to update things. It's in policy, because policy is what sets the guidance for the school district. And of course, you are only one member, and it does take a vote of seven. And when board members come on, as I did, and I'm sure every other new board member, we all have our own agenda, what's dear and near to our own hearts. And so we want to advocate for that, and we're really excited about it. And, you know, I can remember Betty Davis telling me, she was on the school board my first and second year, I believe. And she said, Star, you got a lot to learn. She goes, she said, you know, it is, it has to be more than just about what you want. It has to be what the students, the community, the parents want. It's not just your agenda. And I think that was the hardest thing for school board members when they get elected and come on board, because you've just gone through campaigning, you promised all this stuff, you said what you're going to do. All your constituents, everyone that's giving you campaign donations, and expecting you to follow up on what you said you'd do. And I'm here to tell you, as a school board member for five years, it's not that easy. Because you are part of seven. No one member of the board has any authority without the majority of the vote. So it's, it's very difficult. It's definitely a different role in advocating for our students. And how you can do that again is through board governance, through policy. So, you know, you want to articulate, articulate ends and legally compliant board policy. It has to be legal. We can't put any board policies in there that aren't legal. We have to update, so we have to reflect, and that's what Alicia was talking about, when we go through board policies and review them. We need to make sure that they reflect the changes in the law, as well as the community's culture and expectations for the district. We need to make sure that they reflect the changes in the law as well as the community's culture and expectations for the district. Um, some of these that we're going through now, we are looking at an anti-racist policy and an equity policy, um, which is probably long overdue. And so it hasn't been, I know people would like us just to throw it out there, but these are tough conversations and, uh, we want to make sure that we're doing it right. And so, yes, Marilyn.
Marilyn Stewart, uh, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that issue about racism. So what, what is, what is driven that, that the school district decided to walk, go, go down that path?
Um, I think what's driven it, Marilyn, is, um, I, I, all board members have been advocating for a change in our achievement gap between our, um, groups of students. And so having looked at things that have been brought up and, uh, working with Margot Bellamy, who is now on our school board, I think we realize that the change has to come from inside, that we have to be able to make sure that all of our students have equal opportunity to all of our programs. And that we are, um, doing our best as a school district to make sure that those opportunities are available to them. And that we're doing everything we can to make sure that we have a diverse, um, employee, uh, pool, whether it's from, uh, administration to teachers, we have to. And one of the things we're doing is we have educators rising at East High School, which is going to be grooming our students that want to be teachers. And that will be a way to increase our diversity within our, um, employment population, because it's very hard right now to recruit any teachers. Um, and most people don't want to move to Alaska. It's really hard to get them up here. And the other thing that we are doing though, as military members come up, and this is in legislation, so I hope it gets passed. So as military members come up, and there's a high diversity in our military, that if they have a teaching degree, they can teach for three years in Alaska, um, to, uh, work on getting their certification in Alaska, but it provides us with the ability to have those teachers in Alaska, uh, be able to start teaching and then work on that teaching certificate within Alaska.
Well, I'm glad to see Margot involved in that because, uh, she is definite, has always been a crusade for diversity and dealing with the issue of racism. So I'm glad to know that she's involved in that.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you, Marilyn. Sammy?
Do you know who's putting that, is it through the House?
Uh, it is through, I believe it's through the House, isn't it, Alyssa? Do you know for sure?
And is it through education or military?
Um, it's anyone. Um, so anyone.
No, I meant, is it through the education committee or is it through the military committee?
No, it's not the military pieces through the education.
Okay, and then, uh, is it if they have their teaching cert or if they are in the military and getting their teaching cert?
If they have their teaching cert from another state, they can teach in Alaska, but they have to have their Alaska certification at the end of three years.
Okay, all right.
What does the military have to do with it then? I don't get that.
It, it doesn't have anything to do with it.
Sorry, to the extent the military are only here for a three-year rotation usually, so they're not incentivized to get a certificate?
Right.
If they're just leave again.
But it's not just military, it's anybody that comes to the state with a teaching certificate. But probably the three years was because of military rotation possibly. I don't know.
Well, you know, Star, when you, when, I think you know this better than I do, being on the board. And, uh, I, I have worked in the community pretty much all my life, dealing with outreach and community relations. And we do have a very diverse group here. Uh, but, but a lot of times, uh, the good things that you guys are doing on the board, the decisions you guys are making, don't make it into the minority community. And so, and I asked, you know, whether or not I'm gonna be on the board or not, I want to be involved in this issue with the racism. Um, but also, I ask you guys to consider, once you develop this program, however you, whatever you want to call it, think about now, how do, how do we get this into the community? How do we get this into the hands of the people that needs, needs to hear this, right?
Right.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be important.
Well, and I think on that note, um, Marilyn, I will tell you that one of the things we found as a school board, that we have all these programs available to our student and families do not necessarily know about the opportunities for their students. So that is one thing we are looking at as a board in a district, is how do we get that information out to those families that are not getting that information?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. Um, so we talked about reviewing policies. We want to make sure that they still reflect the district beliefs, mission, vision, and goals. And because we've just, um, voted on our goals and guardrails, um, it's more important than ever to make sure that our policies are in line with those. Um, we want to make sure that we monitor our policies for progress or goals and operational and legal compliance. So that's when we talk about, um, reviewing those, uh, all of this goes along with reviewing those, uh, policies. And it's really a continual, uh, process to get through all of them. And then again, to communicate, and this is what we talked about, communicating policy within the district into the community. Policy is the board's vote, voice. And so it is important that we share with the community, um, those policies and, um, and talk about it in our board meetings and talk about why we feel these policies are necessary. And listen to community members who come and testify before the board on policies that, uh, we have on our agenda. Uh, we get written testimony, we get testimony on the phone, we get testimony in person. Um, so we encourage that. We want our community members, our parents, and many of our students testify. And we want that feedback as we have heard so much from the community already on a couple of these policies that we're presenting now. And one way that you can find out what the board's looking at is always tune into our governance committee meetings, which are posted on our website too, that you can listen in on. You can't participate in those meetings, but you can certainly listen and see what the policy committee is talking about. And then be able to testify at school board meetings or email, um, school board members with your concerns, and you will always get a response. And with that response, I will tell you that it is our board president's role to respond to any, um, emails that we receive from the community unless it is directed to that board member specifically. Yeah, there's a funny look on your face, Sammy.
Well, I know, can you say that one more time? So, unless it, say that one more time, it was.
So the school board president is the spokesperson for the board.
Right.
Speak for herself, she speaks, um, for whatever the board has agreed on or, or the voice of the board. But if you, if you receive an email, um, to the school board and it says school board, it will be the school board president who will answer that email unless it needs to be forwarded on to Dr. Bishop. And then if Dr. Bishop forwards it on to someone else. Um, the only time a school board member should be answering emails if it is directed directly to the school board.
Good.
Sometimes member, uh, community will send it to all seven individually.
Got it. Okay.
And on that note, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I'm just saying, having served on the State Board of Education, you have to be sure if you do make a statement that you are clearly being sure that you are letting people know that that is your personal opinion and not that of the board's.
Right. Um, that is certainly true.
In trouble.
That is certainly true. Um, all right, um, I think, um, one of the other things I wanted to say is that also goes with media. If media contacts the school board, um, the school board president is responsible for responding to the media. Uh, the media could single out a specific school board member. Um, I know many school board members have responded to that, if they've been singled out because they want their opinion or whatever. But it really is the board president who should speak for the board. Okay, Katie, what do we have next? The board delegates authority to the superintendent to manage the district and provide leadership for the staff. That is so, um, I think that's the hardest role for school board members is to understand that we don't manage. We don't manage the district. We govern the district. And we delegate that authority to the superintendent. So what is our power? Our power is that we evaluate the superintendent based on those goals and guardrails and how well um, he or she is, um, supporting those or implementing those or directing those. And what is our student outcomes and the way we have set our goals that they be measured. So that's where our power comes. Our power comes in, um, recruiting the superintendent, evaluating the superintendent, and retaining the superintendent or not retaining them. So that's the reason the board delegates authority to the superintendent to manage. I, I can't even imagine, um, you know, I've been a vice president for several banks and have managed, um, several departments. But this is, I don't have the expertise, I don't have the knowledge. I, um, to, to even, you know, even to attempt this. So I have to have faith and trust that my superintendent, that we as a board hired is, has the ability, the knowledge, the expertise, the leadership to manage the district and provide leadership for our staff. So. Next slide, Katie. All right, my favorite topic, Open Meetings Act. And this just got a lot more serious with the new, uh, I believe it's a, I don't know if it's a, uh, uh, house bill. I don't think it's a house, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't remember which one it is, but they have a bill out there. I don't know where it'll go or how it'll go because we've just gotten the House organized, but it has to do with Open Meetings Act. And if you as an individual, whatever board or state entity or government entity that you are involved with, um, violate the Open Meetings Act, you personally can be sued for ten thousand dollars. Um, so, just puts a little bit more meat to the purpose of Open Meetings Act. And so Open Meetings Act, um, this is probably one of the hardest things because as board members, you can't really get together and talk about things. That's the reason we have our work sessions, so that as a board, we can talk these things out. We can run things by each other, um, because for open discussion, uh, making, decision-making accountability, the public knowledge of both the final action and the process, and this is, this is the reason, the purpose for Open Meetings Act. And the public understanding of the controlling rationale for a decision. So we, um, we do, uh, record our work sessions that we now have before every school board meeting. They usually run from four to five, somebody, sometimes a little longer depending on what we're talking about. It makes for a long day, I will tell you. But it's an opportunity as a board to discuss things that have come up, um, positions that we have, you know, kind of throw some things out there that we've been thinking about in a way that, um, it just gives us that opportunity in a public setting.
I have a question on that, Star. It used to be that it had to be like three or more. Are you saying two people cannot talk about a subject? Even though it's not, if it's just a discussion, it, is that defined in that law? Because it used to be that it, it had to be more than so many people that were doing it.
Right. So two or more, we have committees that the governance committee, the finance committee, and the communication committee has three members of the board. So in that case, the majority of the committee or would be two or more. So in that case, yeah. But for a regular, uh, board meeting, it would be three or more.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, you know, um, to meet these goals, of course, we have to properly notice a meeting. It has to be open to the public and action taken by a public vote. So we cannot do any votes, like when we're in executive session, we can't do any votes in executive session. All we can do is, um, one of the things we do in executive session is, um, discipline with some of our students, and you'll hear us come out, and we'll just do by case number, um, on expulsions or letting students back into the district. Another one is we talk about, um, labor negotiations. Um, that's certainly not something, um, until we reach an agreement that we would talk about out in the public as it would influence any decisions made. Um, Katie, if you want to go to the next slide? So I have put the, um, statutory, um, um, reference in here if you want to look them up, but it is more than three or majority, whichever is less. And a matter upon the body is empowered to act is considered by members collectively. So you've got the municipality clo- uh, code defines, uh, types of meetings, and this is regular meeting, continued meeting, special meeting, or work session. And Katie, if you want to go to the next slide? There we go. Um, so, this is where we talk about meeting the board committees or subcommittees. So let's say that the, um, board president has put together a subcommittee to look at, I don't know, nutrition or, uh, to further look into a board policy or something like that. Again, if there are only three members on that committee, uh, the committee must have two or more board members cannot meet um, outside of that committee meeting. And with authority to advise or make recommendations to the board. So, um, that's what a committee does. They don't vote either. They, with authority, they advise or make recommendations to the board. And a meeting occurs when three members of a majority of the committee, whichever is last, are gathered to consider a matter over which the committee has authority to advise or make recommendations. So that is a little different from a regular board meeting. And again, it is very difficult. There, um, you know, a lot of times you'll get board members that want to discuss certain things. Um, and, and not only do you have to be careful in person, but emails, um, social media. Um, you get a chain, you know, somebody emails something out to one or more, or let's say, two or more board members. And now it becomes four. And, um, there's this, this chain of messages. And that is all public record. So that can become public record, and it can also affect you um, in violating the Open Meetings Act. Katie, want to go to the next slide? And so it doesn't, you know, it doesn't restrict all communications outside of a public meeting, but it does prohibit board members from attending social functions, provided the gathering may ma- or it doesn't prohibit board members from attending social functions, provided the gathering means social. So we've had, um, one of the things we've done, not recently because of pandemic, but, um, as we've had new school board members come on, we've had like, um, like a social gathering to welcome them and their husbands, um, exiting board members, that sort of thing. And it's been a social function. We don't talk about school board business, we don't talk about agendas, we don't talk about anything that we would be voting on. Um, it is strictly social and, you know, how are your kids doing? Um, you know, yeah, that husband of mine, I know what you mean. Um, you know, just things like, you know, just social stuff. So it doesn't mean that you can't have coffee with a school board member. Um, and of course, one-on-one, you can. Um, but just don't make it more than three, and don't talk about, um, things that you would vote on or our board business that could violate the Open Meetings Act. Katie, next slide. So OMA does not contain a requirement that the public be provided an opportunity to address the board during open meetings. However, the Anchorage Municipal Charter does contain this requirement. And it says, "All meetings of the assembly, the school board, and other boards and commissions shall be public." "The assembly by ordinance shall adopt procedures for maximum reasonable public notice of all meetings. At such meetings, the public shall have reasonable opportunity to be heard." And so at the school board, we have, um, testimony at the beginning of the school meeting. It is limited to one hour and three minutes per individual. And, um, anyone that's not heard or we can't get in with that one hour, they are invited to come back and testify at the end of the board meeting. We also have the opportunity on our action items when we're voting on something. If an individual would like to testify on that motion being heard. So it has to relate, if you testify, it has to relate to that motion being heard, and you can't throw in, you know, a bunch of other stuff. So, um, it does have to be on the motion that the board is voting on. So those are the two opportunities to testify before the board. So if we're convening an executive session, and we usually have some executive sessions from five to six in the evening, that's when, uh, we eat dinner. Board members, um, we Board members, um, we have a step on that's re, um, taken out of each of our. I don't know what call it. Our step on or whatever we get for, uh, serving on the board. So we have about, I believe it's $50 a month is taken out. And that provides us for dinner at the two board meetings. And so that gives us an opportunity to eat because of some of you have seen our board meetings can go a little long. Depending on what topics are coming before the board. So we have to convene in public session. So what we do. Is we open the executive session and when we open up a public session. And then there has to be a motion to convene an executive session. And it has to be made clearly and with specific specificity. Describe the subject of the proposed executive session without defeating the purpose of addressing the subject in private. So, um, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of superintendent evaluation. That would be an example of going into executive session. And then the doors are closed and, um, we proceed to. On with our executive session and could be labor negotiations. It could be superintendent evaluation. It could be, um, discipline of students. What's the other one? Help me out.
Superintendent Evaluation.
Right, I said that one. It'll be on the next page. So Katie, next page. So only subjects mentioned it. So here's another thing. Only subjects mentioned in the motion can be discussed. Unless auxiliary to the main question. So if you go into executive session to talk about superintendent evaluation. You can't bring up negotiations. You can't bring up anything else that would need to be, uh, that wasn't. In the motion to move into executive session. Or anything that needed to be talked about in public session because it has to be in front of the public. So permissible topics for executive session could be finances, reputation and character, confidential by law. Confidential records. So immediate knowledge of a matter by the public that would clearly have an adverse effect upon the finances of the district. You know, when we talk about, um, labor negotiations, the contract negotiations, we talk about. Finances because we talk about, um, what would be the recommendation. Of the board if we were to, um, provide a financial incentive. So that could be something. Public discussion of a matter would tend to prejudice the reputation of and character of a person. However, that person has the right to a public meeting. So, um, I don't think we've. As in five years, I don't think we've ever wanted these. Um, but it would be where. There has been a grievance filed against someone and it cut before the board. And unless the person wants to request a meeting, um, we would discuss that matter, um, in executive session. Matter by law, character ordinance, confidential. And then consideration of public records that are confidential by law. And this would be our students, any kind of discipline. Or anything like that, which would be, um, considered public records that are confidential. So notice of all meetings. So, uh, reasonable public notice should be given for all meetings required to be open under this section. And notice include date, time, place and possibly subject, but depending on the type of meeting, you don't always have to have a subject. Maybe given using print or broadcast media, um, as we do on our website. Must be posted at principal office of the public entity. That would probably be our website, which would be the Ed Center and, um. And then under the Anchorage Municipality Code, the content and the notice timing. Of the notice varies based on the type of meeting. So if it's a regular meeting, um, it has to be a minimum of 48 hours. Prior to the 72-hour notice. And again, it has to be date, time and place. Special school board rule, the agenda for regular meetings must be posted on the district's website. At least 32 hours prior to the meeting notice requirements. And in our school board policy, we actually have extended this. So it's a little bit different. It just says it can't be less than that, but it doesn't say that it can't be more than that. So when we talk about emails, and this is really important. You know, I, as a board member, I get emails during board meetings. And I just have to shut off my, my phone because people are always wanting to, um, interject or. Ask me questions. And I'm not talking about other board members necessarily, but sometimes just people in, in the public or other people. So I just turn my cell phone off. Um, I think that's the best thing to do when you're in a meeting because you need to focus your attention on the meeting. You shouldn't be texting between board members for any reason because it's not public, it's not transparent. And just know that, um, public records of all public agencies are open to inspection. By the public under reasonable rules during regular office hours. So basically this means. Public record is pro- broadly defined as books, papers, files, accounts, writings. Including drafts and memorizations of conversation and other items. And regardless of the format or physical characteristics, they are developed or received. By a public agency or a public contractor for their public agency. They are preserved and are preserved for informational value. So basically it can be anything. An email is probably one of the things that can get you in more trouble. And that email, even though it's a personal email. It can be subpoenaed for any reason if somebody thought you were violating the Open Meetings Act. So. The other thing you don't want to do when they talk. Let's say you've been doing an email back and forth with this board member, but it becomes a continuous email. That can also, um, be looked at suspiciously. Especially if it's on the same subject and it just keeps progressing. So, I mean, the best course of action is, is. Just be careful. Make sure you're following the Open Meetings Act and. You know, always have that in mind when you are discussing anything with board members. And again, here I said email, simply electronic record, whether board member. We talked about public record. It doesn't matter if it's public record. If it's developed or received by the district, board member in his or her official capacity. And it's preserved for informational value or evidence of operation of the district or charter school. Um, those are all. Public records and, uh, email implications. And again, we just talked about that could also include your personal emails. So. So be cautious. Your email communication is potentially a disclosure, disclosable public record. So just, uh, keep that in mind.
The Assembly just had that, um, buried case. So.
Yeah. Um, it, you know, it's serious. I mean, that's the reason we hold school board meetings is so that the public. Can listen to us, um, talk about why we're voting the way we are. Discussing, um, how we're supporting things. So they have a better understanding. Where board members are coming from, what they're looking at as far as data, what's influencing their decisions. It's very important to be transparent. I, I can't say that enough. So. I haven't heard a lot of questions from everyone and I probably left too long for questions, but if there's something else. I know that next week we're going to be talking about board agendas. So we'll actually be looking at agendas. How would you change an agenda if you needed to? We'll look a little bit at Robert's rules. We're not going to get into it too much, but we're going to talk about. That we do follow them and sometimes they can be tricky as a board president. You get challenged, uh, a lot of times and have to be, uh, fairly knowledgeable, but luckily we have Katie who's. Our right-hand person who keeps us out of trouble. And then we're going to talk about board ethics. We're going to talk about, um, the budget. And what our budget looks like this next year and how we came up with that. And just a little bit more on goals and guardrails as it relates to the budget. So, um, is there anything that I didn't cover under these topics that you guys would like more information about? I feel like I've been doing a lot of talking. Alyssa, you have anything you want to add?
Sure. One, you've done an excellent job. Sorry. I'm just so proud because very, very thorough and just a great overview. So I got a lot of people to brag to you about from our training last weekend. So they're going to be excited and calling you. But I will say just on the notice component, um, you know, we mentioned those minimums, but there's a legal guideline on the, based on the reasonableness. So a little issue, well, that's not going to be a big deal if it's 32 or 72 hours, but a big issue like. Keeping schools all the way open or keeping schools all the way closed, that's going to need a lot more. Notice to be reasonable because the impact of it is far more significant. So it's not just a simple, that's a minimum, but it doesn't. It's not always the minimum because if it's a very serious issue, the courts have said it has to be, um. Well, what it is, what the courts have said is not specific to that issue, but, um, but it there is, it can be more than that. So we always. To make it two weeks notice or at least a week before and put it on not action because the goal of course with notice is for. The community to actually be on notice, not just a technical qualification, but where people can really meaningfully be aware. So I just want to put that out.
No, I appreciate that. And that's what I talked about where we have the minimum, but as a school board, we have elected to kind of go. Beyond that to make it more of a maximum. Um, Niall, I see your hand up.
Uh, yes, thank you, Star. Niall Williams here. So I wanted to, um, ask, ask a little bit more about the notice. What exactly is the minimum timeframe, um, for notice of any regular school board meeting?
For, uh, the, it's, uh, 72 hours.
72 hours.
That's per statute, but, um, if you look in our, uh, board bylaws. I believe it's in our bylaws, it might not be, but we actually have extended that. Um, Katie, would you mind? How soon do you get that out to the board? I know you get our agenda out early to board members so that we can review it. Are you there, Katie?
Yeah. Hi, thanks. So we, um, and I was just pulling up the, the public notice, um, so we could see it in policy. But, um, the automatic release of the, uh, regular meeting agenda is 72 hours. Unless to Alyssa's point, if there was something that was, um, uh, you know, a bigger, uh, topic that needed more, then we would adjust that.
Right. And then how soon do you try to get that out to board members so they can review it if they have any questions or need further information?
I believe in policy, it's 10 business days.
Okay, great. Thank you, Katie.
And Katie, while you have that up, could you show them how you typed in public notice in the search? So if people wanted to find something in our board policy.
So it would, you would just go to the search bar, um, in, uh, where all the policies are listed and it'll pull up. All the policies where those words show up and then I. Navigated to the one that I knew I wanted, which would be in the 9000s.
And then I will say for special meetings, and we have called special meetings in the past, um, we had, um. Challenges or events at Diamond High School, um, and other schools where we've had to call emergency board meetings and it is 24-hour notice. Now, did that answer your question?
Um, yes. And then. My next kind of, uh, question is with regards to. Communications that establish a meeting, right? Where maybe the intent is, uh. You know, board member A asks a question to board member B about a specific policy. And then somehow within that email string. It ends up being a communication that tags in a third person. Does that then become? A source of public record under the Open Meetings Act?
No, um, that is not, um, as long as it's. As long as they don't tag in a fourth board member. If you tag in a fourth board member. Then it becomes a violation of the Open Meetings Act and we are not in compliance. Yeah. And then it would become public record.
And so at this point, um, is there any other than censure or, uh, the meeting being. Um, invalidated? Is there any real? Punishment that's exercisable? Um. Like I, I know you had mentioned that the, the House or the Senate may be putting forth some bill where you could actually be. Individually held civilly liable for a violation. Does anything like that exist now or is it a criminal violation or? Anything like that?
There are violations. There is. Shoot, I'm trying to think of the word. Penalty.
Yeah. The Open Meetings Acts, like you mentioned, what can invalidate it depending on the seriousness of the violation. And then the board can choose censure, but also, um, if you look into our ethics, there are some. Other actions the board can take. There's four different choices. Under, um, in our board bylaws, I can't remember the number, um, but you can do the search function for it. And then of course, the public can sue the school board. So that's a good goal to avoid.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Well, those are all great questions. Are there any other questions that? Anyone would like to ask or something I haven't covered that, um. Uh, you feel you might want us to address while I have, um, two other board members here. We're only three and two of them are running for office. So, um. Yes, Sammy.
I have a budget question. Should I wait for it next time or should I?
Well, go ahead and ask it and I'll let you know if I think it's better to wait or answer it.
Okay. I guess, um, how do they, uh? They establish the general fund. I, I understand that with the funding formula and then, but. The budget was really 841 million plus. So. What determines, and I understand there's title money and everything, but. Why do they even mention the general fund? Because that's not at all the budget.
Right. That's what we call our operational budget. Um, the overall budget includes. Things that are not included in there from the state like transportation. Um, we do get some federal funding for nutrition. I'm trying to think of some of the other, can you think of anything else, Hildy, that would be added in there that wouldn't be part of the general budget capital?
Uh, and grants, you know, Lisa can just say it, I'm sure by memory.
Yeah. So I mean, there's a lot of things that goes into that that's not part because grants can't be used in the operational budget. Transportation is designated for transportation. Title I funds or for, you know, or, uh, title II, title VII, whatever are for those. So there are other things that do add up. So that's about what? 300? Alyssa, can you think of anything else that we haven't?
It's not fully that 830. Remember there's placeholders as well.
Right. There's placeholders. Correct. Thank you.
So it's not all funded, but, um, the grants are significant. It's awesome that so many people in our district work so hard to. You know, get preschool grants or really leverage those opportunities. So they do a great job.
And if we don't put a placeholder in there, we can't receive them. So we have to allocate for them if they become available. So yeah, that's an important, um, message. Thank you, Alyssa.
So, uh, is all the grants star from, from, are they federal grants? Where are these grants? Uh, are they?
They can be state. Yeah, they can be state or federal. We apply for as many grants as we can, we can get, um, because it's money that we can put towards pre-K or. Um, a lot of our grants through the state are pre-K or capital improvement.
Okay.
But there can be other things too.
Okay. All right.
There's the legislative grants too.
Right.
Which date, but.
Which we don't get a lot of that money anymore, but we still apply for them.
Oh, really? When did that, when did that happen?
Um, a lot of our money goes to the rural districts, um, based on their need. So, um, it is. For the whole state of Alaska and those 52 school districts and, um, you know, it's just whoever need, whoever's need is priority.
Or the need, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Wow. These are great questions. Thank you guys. So I'm glad we were able to answer that for you, Sammy. Did we answer it?
Yeah, I kind of knew. I just thought maybe I was missing something, but.
Yeah. I mean, you know, when you think about it, as school board members, you are, um. balancing or you have a budget that far exceeds any other organization. I mean, our, if you look and we'll talk about it more tomorrow, but probably eighty-seven to ninety percent of our budget just goes to personnel. Eighty-seven to ninety percent goes to personnel, to teachers, bus drivers. I mean, that's benefits, that's insurance, that's all of those things. That leaves very little leftover for other things that the school district needs. Personnel are expensive, but we can operate without them.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we still have some time. I know you guys probably have other things to do than that, so I'm not trying to drag this out, but I just want to make sure that I answer any questions. Dora, did you have any questions or comments? Kim, did you have any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, Carl, anything, any comments or questions?
Oh, thank you much, Star, for facilitating this and all those involved. Looking forward to the next session.
Okay.
Star, this is Dora. I don't have any questions at this time, so sorry, I couldn't get to my mutant time.
That's okay, I appreciate it. Marilyn, do you have any other questions or comments?
No, none. Again, I just want to say thank you for hosting this. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, well, I, Niall, you have any other questions or comments?
No, thank you, Star, and thank you, Alicia and President Vakalis. I appreciate y'all hosting this meeting today. Quite informative and I really look forward to learning more so that I can help the candidates and constituents of Anchorage by being the new voice of CE. Thank you.
Judy, you have any questions or comments?
You know, there was, can we have this PowerPoint or this information that you did? There was an attachment, but it would not open on my computer. Is that, was that sent out? I would love to have this so I could go back over it and, and actually remember where to go for the policy and that. That'd be wonderful if we could have that copy of that.
Katie, where is that going to be at?
I can, what I'll do is I'll send out an email to the group that, with a link to the agenda, which will have all the documents loaded in there and also the policy manual.
That way we can go back over and, and think about, because it was a lot, but it was great. Thank you, Star. That was a great, great presentation, but it was a lot of information.
It was a lot of information and next week there'll be even more information. So, well, think about those questions you get, didn't get a chance to ask and there'll always be next week. I hope to see you all back here next Monday.
And thank you to Katie too.
Thank you, everyone.